All right, it's five o'clock.
We have no secrets.
No secrets.
Green? Where's the green?
On that little, there's a little green flash.
Sorry.
You're gonna kill doing your math, Luke.
It's a call to orders for our meeting this afternoon, the 8th of April 2014. And we welcome you all in the gallery. Nice to see you all. We have quite a few delegations today. And we will start our meeting by asking people to pray.
Dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to thee for the many blessings that we enjoy in this wonderful part of Alberta that we call home. We are humbled by our responsibilities as councilors to the fine folks who have settled here. And we ask always for thy guidance in the decision-making process, that we can govern according to thy will and to make choices that are beneficial to all. We ask and say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much for the prayer, councillor. We need to add up the agenda, but we have one addition and we need to remove one item. So let's start with a removal. If you look at item six, Business arising, the bylaw 1624 regarding the carrier charge, when we put this on the agenda is because our legal advisor for the town had said it would be important to put it as a bylaw. Marion received on Friday night an email. We had said, we don't think we need a bylaw. And she went back and researched and said, Marion, you were right, we don't need a bylaw. So we need to remove that item. And the addition has to do with the share service review. And we will call that...
Oh, real quick on the, on the, this one getting rid of, are we gonna do something by way of motion or is that all taken care of?
It's done.
It's just removed from the agenda. Because there is no, there is no motion that has been voted at this point.
So I'm guessing we still need one, is what I'm asking.
No, I made a motion.
Just for clarification, the motion was to move forward with the waiver for three years.
Yeah.
Well, actually for four years. And so that will be done by way of agreement, as was discussed previously.
As opposed to a bylaw?
Yeah.
So we are done? We actually have, yeah, made the motion too.
In fact, you will see, if you review the minute, you will see that the minute was, the motion was made by councillor Bangring, and it included all what we wanted to see in that agreement. Thank you. Okay, the addition, the share service review. And we're going to, let's put it as 6A, may we replace that item? We'll be fine. Okay. I need a motion to approve the minute, councillor Barfus. A quote a minute as amended? The agenda, sorry, as amended. All in favor? Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. So now we have delegation. The first delegation is from Dr. Vivian Sutter, who is accompanied by Mr. Schwartz, I understand, and from AHS. They're going to address the topic of fluoride in water. We had two presentations earlier on in the month regarding that very issue that was for removal, and this time we are there to listen to AHS. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation. And I've also brought Dr. Luke Schwartz. So you're probably familiar with myself as a medical officer of health for Southern Alberta. I've been here for six years and covered this area as well. Not only do I have responsibilities around whooping cough and measles, and quite heard about whooping cough today in the news, but also in providing local communities, et cetera, information on which you base, which you can base decisions. So one of the things we'll be talking about today, and we've been asked to talk about, is providing some information on water fluoridation as a public health measure. Dr. Luke Schwartz is a dental health officer for the province of Alberta. And so I'm very grateful that Dr. Schwartz could drive down from Calgary today. And he's really the expert in this area. So we all know that oral health is important, not only from an individual perspective, from a family perspective, and a community level. We also know that we recommend things around oral health. Brush your teeth, eat healthy, you know, don't chew on candies, et cetera. And there's other measures that we can do, such as water fluoridation is another effective strategy. Because we know as much as we talk about eating healthy, keeping your teeth clean, it doesn't always happen. And so Dr. Schwartz is going to be going through some information and providing the local context. I don't know if any of you had a chance to go through some of the slides, but actually some of our local data of fluoride concentrations in the local water systems, for example, what is added to fluoridate the water, and also at some of our oral health in children on surveys that have been done. So I'm going to let Dr. Schwartz take over and provide all his expertise.
Thanks, Dr. Sutter, for that kind introduction. And thank you, Madam Mayor and councillor, for inviting us to come. I'll just launch right into these slides. I know there seem to be a lot of them, but we timed it. It should be less than 15 minutes, so we'll try and get in and out of your hair. In October, the Canadian Institute for Health Information released a report about children from the age of birth to age six years who go to hospital to get their teeth fixed. It's a terrible fact that the most common reason that little kids enter hospital and get general anaesthetic is to treat a preventable disease, and that's tooth decay. The millions of dollars in hospital costs are only a part of it. Each family also has to pay the dentist and take time off work or off school to go for this. It can be devastating for a family. All too often, this embarrassing situation causes families' strife and financial hardship. Just last month, there was a report in the British Medical Journal comparing areas of fluoridated England to non-fluoridated England. And they found that the levels of children going into hospital for tooth decay were half in the fluoridated areas compared to the non-fluoridated areas. So these are ugly pictures, but I put them up there for a reason. And these are Alberta pictures taken by Dr. Patterson, who's from the Faculty of Dentistry in Edmonton. So this is a photo of uncontrolled tooth decay in a teenager. I'm sorry, it doesn't show up well in the slide. Forgive me, I missed one there. Is that... Yeah. Oh, it's kind of doing things on me here. Okay, that's the teenager. This is a child less than six years old with severely decayed baby teeth. Disease like this has infections, draining abscesses, leaving the child in pain, unable to sleep or eat proactively, making her unwell. She will probably need to go to the hospital to get this fixed. Our Alberta Health Services dental hygienist, who's here today, phoned me and she said, I'm glad that you're putting these slides up because I see these kinds of people, but most people do not see this. So when she's doing her preschool clinics, she, it's the dental staff who end up having to deal with this.
Dr. Schwartz, I'm just to clarify, this that we're seeing is from families that were in non-fluoridated areas?
I can't answer that. So Dr. Patterson took the slide.
No problem.
Cardston gets its drinking waters from Lee Creek and the St. Mary's River. Like most surface waters in Alberta, the natural fluoride level ranges from about 0.1 to 0.2 parts per million, or we also call that milligrams per liter. This is too low to have any effect on dental health. The recommended fluoridation level was 1.0 for many decades. It dropped to 0.8 in 1998, and then recently dropped further to 0.7 parts per million. Both Health Canada and the U.S. Centers for Disease Control agree on that level. Thank you. This is... There's been a significant improvement over the years, but cavities are still a problem in Alberta. This graph compares schoolchildren in fluoridated Cardston with non-fluoridated Fort MacLeod. Over the last two years, our Alberta Health Services dental staff, screening kindergarten to grade two schoolchildren, find that there are fewer kids in Cardston with dental problems, even though the population is greater than Fort MacLeod. So if you do the percentages right there at the bottom, Cardston kids have 23% fewer referrals for decay and 47% fewer kids with urgent problems. So this graph, I didn't look at any other factors other than fluoridation. We looked at Cardston Elementary School and we looked at WA Day's Elementary School in Fort MacLeod. Dr. Doug Johnson worked for 30 years at Sick Kids Hospital in fluoridated Toronto. And then he moved to B.C. Children's Hospital in non-fluoridated Vancouver. He discovered within six months how different it was. Small cavities that you normally left alone, kind of wait and see in Toronto, quickly developed into deep cavities that required big fillings. He later talked about his surprise and how different things were between the two cities. And the main difference was water fluoridation. It's one of those things that you take for granted when you have it. He said that he had a renewed respect for fluoridation. And he said, I know that water fluoridation has been discussed in B.C. with little or no success. There's a lot of bad science out there. That may be impossible to overcome in the future. I know another dentist who practiced in Hinton for several decades and then moved to British Columbia, Vancouver Island. He found the same difference. The kids in Hinton didn't have the same number of cavities or the amount of decay as he saw in fluoridated Hinton. Fluoridation slows down tooth decay. Dentists have more time to assess, to watch, and even to reverse it. However, in a non-fluoridated community, there is no such luxury. The dentist has to do the filling right away. So how did AHS arrive at the position in support of water fluoridation? This slide outlines the approach. First of all, we don't want to do anything to harm people or harm the environment. You shouldn't put anything in water unless it has significant benefit and very low risk. That's why we look to the research to see what it says. And then fluoride in water is a natural fact. By regulating the level, we can also improve public health. Health Canada's in-depth review of fluoridation assessed all identified human health risks and effects. They looked at new studies related to cancer, the immune system, reproductive system, human development, genetics, the nervous system, and IQ. They found the same thing as other reviews, that at levels used in water fluoridation, there is no link. They also found that up to 2% of Canadians drink water that's naturally fluoridated. Many people, many fewer people than in places like China or India. Health Canada recommends that water fluoridation is still an effective public health measure. The standard maximum, so Health Canada also looks, what's the minimum level? They also look at what's the maximum? If the maximum in your water is more than 1.5 parts per million or milligrams per liter, then you need to reduce it. So Health Canada sets both sides of the, of the stage. Why are we still talking about water fluoridation more than 65 years after it was introduced in 1945? It is still safe and effective. It still reaches everyone in the community. The best available evidence points to reduced inequities in oral health. That means the worst-off kids in the fluoridated community don't have as many cavities as the worst-off kids in a community without fluoridation. And that's one of the reasons it's important in public health. It's a straightforward way to make life healthier and better for many people. We rely on the research, and this pyramid demonstrates that not all research has the same value. Test tube research doesn't carry as much weight as animal research, and neither of those carries as much weight as human research. Within human research, there are different varieties too. Some studies look back at the records of what happened. Others plan for a change and then measure what is the outcome of what happens during the change. The best, most reliable evidence comes from the top of the pyramid, the systematic reviews, where they look at many reports all at once. We're fortunate that there have been some systematic reviews in water fluoridation. In the year 2000, the first systematic review was written by a team of independent researchers from York University in England. The review started with more than 3,000 reports, and then they sifted them down to the best ones, 254. And then the final report was printed again in British Medical Journal. They found that the best available evidence supported water fluoridation as a good public health measure. I know you can't see the details here, but you'll get the big picture. They lined up 30 studies showing what was the difference in how many kids there were in an age group who had no cavities whatsoever. So zero decay, perfect oral health. And then they compared them with places where they started fluoridation, and they compared them to places where they didn't start water fluoridation. The vertical line indicates no effect. So if water fluoridation had no effect on cavities, all of the reports would cluster around that vertical line. But you can see that they don't. Most of the reports are to the right of the line, showing that fluoridation means there are more kids in that community without any cavities. When mouth bacteria make acid and attack tooth enamel, fluoride comes to the rescue of that weakened spot. It also helps build a decay-resistant enamel before the tooth erupts. Fluoride works best when there's a small amount constantly present in the mouth. And so drinking water for, drinking fluoridated water recharges the saliva with small amounts of fluoride every time you sip water. Some people believe that fluoride is scary and not natural. On the other side, if you think about tea being the second most popular beverage in the world, a typical cup has three to four milligrams of fluoride, or five times as much as you would expect in normal fluoridated water. York review also looked at what happened if you discontinued fluoridation. And again, similar to the other graph, each colored box indicates a change in tooth decay rates after fluoridation was stopped. And again, the vertical line indicates zero effect. So if fluoridation had no effect, all of the, all of the reports would cluster around the zero line. But they don't. Most of the reports are on the left side of the line, showing that children had more cavities after the fluoridation was stopped. So typically, there is an increase in tooth decay if you discontinue water fluoridation, unless there's some alternative program that comes into place. Usually, those alternative programs are at higher cost, and they're not as comprehensive. They don't reach as many people. People who are disadvantaged are the most affected. And then overall, there is no evidence that stopping fluoridation has ever improved overall health. This slide shows that tooth decay rates have dropped in many countries around the world, but only some of them have water fluoridation. However, there are other factors that show up, that don't show here. And those are things like diet, access to dental care, going to the dentist, and use of other fluoride products. Some of these countries have added fluoride in the salt or in the milk. Some countries invest heavily in public health programs, so they have dental clinics right in the schools, and they bring kids out of the classroom and do the dental care right in the school every few months. So this goes back to the slide near the beginning where Dr. Sutter talked about the essential nature of diet and daily care and regular care. Fluoridation is just one of the factors that affects tooth decay. The last slide showed a graph that seemed to talk about just one factor, fluoride, when in fact there were many other complexities there. This graph from the U.S. compares rates of autism, you can see them going up rapidly, with rates of sales of organic foods, also going up rapidly. At first glance, it appears that these two are closely related, but I don't think anyone here believes that. I put this slide up to show how you have to be careful how you assess and evaluate information. Things are not always as simple as they look. Cardston adds hydrofluoric lactic acid to fluoridate water. This is a liquid additive that blends perfectly into the water and dissociates into ions that work exactly the same as sodium fluoride. It doesn't matter if it's natural or if it's added. So water treatment operators can control the water fluoride level instead of it changing with the snow melt and river flow rate. The compound is certified to conform with the standard of purity. The European Australian systematic reviews did not find that water fluoridation causes adverse health effects. And then a few years ago, in 2011, European Commission did a critical review about water fluoridation. And they found that the weight of evidence points to no human health or environmental risks from the levels used in water fluoridation. However, consuming too much fluoride from any source can cause enamel or dental fluoresces. Fluoresces is a change in the way that the tooth appears because of excessive fluoride while the tooth is forming. So it only occurs in young children before their teeth erupt into the mouth. Cases associated with water fluoridation are either very mild or mild. Canada's rates of dental fluoresces are low, and in Alberta, we could find no difference between fluoridated and non-fluoridated communities. However, we know that the level can be much worse if the child swallows toothpaste regularly. Water fluoridation uses less than one one thousandth as much fluoride as you have in toothpaste. Sorry, again, this slide is difficult to see, but this is an example of very mild to mild dental fluoresces and how it changes the appearance of tooth enamel. These teeth have been dried, and so it shows more dramatically. It's less visible when the teeth are wet with saliva. Looking at this slide, I can't help but compare it to the picture of decay that we saw earlier in this presentation. But is it ethical? It's not unusual to add substances to food or water to improve the health of the public, and there are some examples at the top of that slide. In 2012, the province of Quebec did an in-depth review of the ethics of fluoridation. The committee found that the benefits outweigh any potential negative effects. Communities have a single water supply, so they must make a decision about fluoridation, even if it impacts freedom of choice. Health Canada's position is quite clear. This is an effective and recommended public health measure. And so to sum up, why do we do this? Dr. Sutter and I both believe in the value of prevention. It's better than treatment. It reduces the number of children who suffer needlessly from tooth decay. Dental health is an important part of overall health. The current weight of evidence supports fluoridation as a good public health measure. It's safe and effective. And finally, fluoridation helps people who might not otherwise get routine dental care. There are many facets to this issue, and it's easy to get tangled up in the details. But just imagine for a minute that Cardston's water supply had a good natural fluoride level, say 0.7 or 0.8. I wouldn't be here, and Dr. Sutter wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be having this conversation. Generations of families living in Cardston would have good oral health, and you'd be wondering, what's all that fuss about everywhere else? We don't do this alone. There are many people involved in, in public health. Sorry, it's your last slide, I can't seem to get it back. And water fluoridation. So we recognize all of the folks for their help in this important work. Thank you to the people of Cardston and to mayor and council for your interest in this issue.
Thank you. Maybe a councillor may want to ask you some questions. Any questions? I have one question for you. There, I read not so long ago, and I meant to bring that study, and unfortunately, I don't have it with me. But it's a studies that was done in Colton, in B.C., in the town of Colton. And that study was a longitudinal study over 10 years period, and looked at the impact of removing fluoride from the water, which that town had done. So a cohort of children from school were followed. And the study, to the amazement of those who conducted the study, showed improvement in oral health rather than a reversal to more decay. And, I mean, they suppose that the reason for this is that when the water was taken out, parents took more care of seeing that their children took better care of their teeth. Is that a possibility?
It is possible. I'm sorry, I don't know that study, and I wish I did.
I will, if you give me your card, I will send it to you. I sent it to Jeff, but Jeff is not there tonight to retrieve it for me.
Well, I mean, the example that we might have is Calgary. So water fluoridation was discontinued there in 2011. Dentists immediately jumped up and said, okay, what can we be doing extra now to make sure that we cover these, these kids who don't have this everyday protection? And so they're doing more sealants. In public health, we're doing more fluoride varnishes. There are now new nonprofit organizations. There's an Alexander Health Bus that's going around to the disadvantaged areas of the city and applying dental sealants and doing fluoride varnish. So we're doing all kinds of added things to try and cover the kids who don't have water fluoridation anymore to help them out.
Right. And now I remember when I was on a base in Belgium, we had to live by these standards, the dental association standards. And therefore, we had to have the children have a fluoride rinse every month, because in Belgium, there is no fluoride in the water. So that's what the children had every month. I had in school, a little cup of very small amount of fluoride. The switch on one minute and kind of put the rest in a napkin. And that's the way they did it, which was very topical. And probably more useful that way, wouldn't you say?
Well, it does reach the children who participate. We used to have a fluoride rinse program in Calgary for many years. And we found that it was hard to get consent from a lot of parents, and it was typically the parents who you wanted those kids to be involved in this program, who weren't consenting to have them involved. And, you know, the kids always complained, oh, I hate that flavor, I don't want to do that. We had to get volunteers from the parents to help conduct it in the schools. Teachers didn't like it because it would take five minutes out of their class. There were lots of problems with it, and so that's why we discontinued it.
I just wanted to know. Thank you. Councillor, please.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and then turn it to councillor. I had a couple of questions. Some of the research that I've done has shown that the benefits of fluoride are topical. Does your, does your research disagree with that, or, I mean, your studies, or, to your knowledge, that fluoride works systemically rather than topically?
It works mostly topically, but there also is a systemic effect. So both are involved.
Yeah. The other, the other question I had to do is that we've talked about concentrations of fluoride, and I see that that's changed, you know, over the years. They've, they've tried to decide which, what's the best concentration of fluoride. And I'm wondering, and you mentioned like toothpaste has a lot more fluoride in it than... So I was just looking at a tube of toothpaste here earlier, and it said 0.243%. And I was trying to do a little bit of math, because usually with a, with a toothpaste, you're using a little, a pea-sized amount of toothpaste, and it does say, do not swallow on the tube. And so that's, you know, that's, that's in pea size, which I would assume would be about half a, half a milliliter, maybe, you know, like half a cc, which would be about half a milliliter. And then, so I thought, okay, if I was to take that and put it into this, if this was distilled water and mix it up, the concentration would, would be reduced 1,000 times. So it would end up being about 0.2 parts per million. So I'm questioning, what, you know, what is more important, you know, the concentration or the total amount? You know, like, you know, how many glasses of water are we supposed to drink a day? And, you know, some people are going to get more, especially children, you know, young children. And you mentioned that that's where, where fluoresces is more likely to develop, is in young children, when they, when they, before their teeth have erupted. And it seems somewhere I read that they don't recommend use fluoride water in baby formula. But, so that's, that's my question is, you know, you know, what's more important, the concentration or the, or the total?
Total amount.
Total amount that a person is consuming?
What you want to make sure is that the concentration that you have doesn't lead to an overall amount that's too much. And so that was the subject of the Health Canada review, to figure out, well, is 1.0 the best concentration, or is 0.8? And that's how they landed on 0.7. And same in the Centers of Disease Control in the United States. So it's more about having it often enough. If you have a small amount in your mouth all the time, that's going to help slow down tooth decay and perhaps even reverse it. The business of baby formula, if the amount in the water is high, then absolutely, if you're on well and you've got 1.5 milligrams per liter, which is the upper maximum that Health Canada recommends, well, I think I'd think twice about putting that in baby formula for a baby. At 0.7, there is a possibility of the child getting some very mild or mild dental fluoresces, as we saw, as we showed in the picture. But those rates are very low in Canada, so in fact, it's not happening a lot.
All of your slides refer to European countries. Nothing referred to North American countries. Why? We have, we have fluoride in gum. We have it in mouthwash. We have it in toothpaste. We have it in toothpaste. What more, how much more fluoride do we need? And if you're talking about a topical and not a... Yeah, systemic, then how come we need more fluoride in our water?
I think the amount you got is actually just fine. At 0.8, and Cardston has had it for many years.
Okay, now, did all of your slides show these individuals? These pictures show individuals that don't use mouthwash, don't use toothpaste, don't use gum, or any of these kind of fluoride-treated other products?
So fluoride is just one of the many factors that will help prevent tooth decay. There's also diet and daily habits. I'm not sure I'm getting it.
Well, what I'm saying is, it seemed like we're concentrating on more on how much fluoride is in the water as to how much fluoride we're actually taking into our body from other sources. Now, we need to combine those and find out what's happening. And a lot of people chew gum with fluoride in it. A lot of people use mouthwashes with fluoride in it. They have toothpaste with fluoride in it. What are their sources? And how much more fluoride can we have? And how much fluoride do we need?
Yeah, I don't know of any gums that do have fluoride in it. And mouthwash and toothpaste, I mean, typically, you would spit out after using it. It's not intended to be swallowed.
But it is still coating your teeth.
You will get a topical effect, absolutely. And so, yeah, there's a little bit that you will take in, but it's nowhere near anything that's going to cause you a problem. When Health Canada did their review, they thought that if you're consuming something at the rate of 10 milligrams or more per day.
If you don't mind me, I think what Counselor Benjris may be asking is, because people already use product every day that contains fluoride, why is it necessary then to have fluoride in the water?
Well, because it is a public health measure. There's not everybody who's consuming fluoridated products every day. And so this is a public health response. So it might not impact perhaps the seven of you folks, but when I look at the town of Cardston, where maybe there's 3,000 people, and I know that it makes a difference of 15 percent in tooth decay rates, then you're going to have, that's a huge number all of a sudden.
And those figures that you provided are current figures that you got from the children from school?
Yes.
Is that the way that were collected?
Yes. Kristin collected them. I ruled the two years together. So it's the most recent data that we have, absolutely.
Okay, and so that was done through checks at the school level?
At the school and preschool we do as well. But we compared the school levels, kindergarten to grade two, actually including some grade threes in W.A.D. in Fort McLeod, which is unfluoridated, compared to Carson, which is fluoridated.
Okay. Thank you so much. Counselor Pivoy?
So just based on the, you know, the data, I mean, you know, babies are born, and then by the age of four, they could have cavities. I mean, is that right? They could have cavities by the age of four.
By age one.
So within a short amount of time, let's say within the space of two to three years, we should be able to tell significant, you know, differences if, for instance, we decided to go off of fluoride, and then all of a sudden, within about two to three years, we should have some data showing an increase in cavities. If that were the case, I mean, would that be accurate? Or is this something that takes a couple of decades to really see the benefit?
So Calgary's involved in a discontinuation study right now because they stopped fluoridation, and we're comparing kids in Calgary to the kids in Edmonton. And when we talk to experts in the States about, well, how long out do we have to look to really be seeing a change? They thought it would be about five years. So we're actually in there a little bit early because it ended in 2011. And, but it's going to give us a good baseline. I think we should go back in 2018 and have another look then.
But the results of it so far, do we have any results of that study yet?
No, the staff are still in schools looking at the children.
And then just a follow-up question. I really respect how you said, you know, you have to be careful with the data you look at, and you showed the organic foods. I love that slide. I am concerned, though, that we have heard reports, in fact, I've seen a study where it said that 800 different independent studies showed negative and adverse effects of fluoride in drinking water. So, I mean, what do you guys say to that? Like that there's allegedly 800 independent studies showing adverse negative effects of fluoride?
So you have to look to science to give you an answer to some kind of topic. And if you do scientific studies, you're never going to find that all of the scientific studies are going to say exactly the same thing, especially when you're looking across a population. Some will give you evidence on this side, while some will give you evidence on this side. But the heavy weight of the evidence is absolutely in favor of water fluoridation.
Thank you. More pointedly, how would you address some of the concerns? And I'm sure you, this isn't the first time you've spoken on this, that individuals such as Dr. Beck have brought up in regards to fluoride in the studies and the safety of using it?
You know, I've been in the same room with Dr. Beck a number of times, and he's done his presentation, and I've done mine. You know, quite honestly, I wish I knew what the motivation was. There are so many issues that he could be devoting his intellect and his energy towards. And, you know, this one seems like not the right thing to be investing energy in because the science really isn't there to show that there is a public health problem with water fluoridation.
So you must have reviewed then the studies that he uses in his presentation, too?
I read his book, yeah.
And so you must be cognizant of all the studies that he quotes in his book?
I haven't read each study individually, but I've certainly read the book and have an idea of what he's referring to, yes.
Because then, for my own interest, I wondered, would you say then that the studies that are given there, the pool of study is not complete, that there are other studies that should have been presented also? Is that we try to understand and be cognizant of all what has happened, so we know what there is for studies that have been shown on the negative side. But is that book then missing all the studies on the positive side? Is that what you are alluding to?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
In that book, there are many, many studies. There is hundreds and hundreds of studies. Some from people that seem to be fairly strong scientists or recognized scientists in the world. But I also understand that on the other side of the coin, there are people like you who do not agree with those studies and feel there are better studies to be referred to. So would you say those studies are missing out of that book?
Oh, absolutely. They don't put any of the positive studies in at all. They're just showing one side of the coin there. Whereas a systematic review is designed to look at all of the studies. So it's just they don't care if it's positive or negative. They want to see what does this study say? Whereas in that book, my sense is that they selected the ones that show only negative effects. That's why it's called the Case Against Fluoride.
Okay, and then would you say that AHS has done a review of all those studies and then from there on decided what was more important to remove or to keep?
We have not looked at all of those individual studies. You should know that many of them were also published in a journal that's not peer-reviewed. So it's not listed on the National Library of Medicine lists. We looked to Health Canada, which did the very in-depth review between 2007 and 2010. So they had a panel of experts to look at all of that information and to look at those studies, and then compare the negative ones with the positive ones.
Okay, thank you.
Which actually brings up one of my last questions here. In that review, you just talked about the 2007 to 2010. It says that there was no link to any adverse health effects, basically. And then they cited several cancer, immune system, nervous, IQ, et cetera, right? So in all those, it came out no link to adverse health. And then, and then, if I may, just because I'm trying to understand it, Health Canada, in their later review here, says the benefits outweigh the risks. And it's like, well, what risks? Didn't you just say there were none? Shouldn't it say the benefits are all there are? As opposed to the benefits outweigh the risks? So I guess it's just seeming like we're not disclosing on this side what those risks are and the fact that they even exist.
The risk is dental fluorosis.
So that's what we're saying is the only risk is too much fluoride makes your teeth white and shiny like this kid here?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. That's...
Some people are really, really excited about dental fluorosis.
Well, yeah, there are worse things, right? Sure. So thank you.
What is the dental fluorosis?
It's white marks on the enamel, very, very, very deep white, yes.
That from fluoride?
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Do you have a more question, Counselor Pivoy?
I was just going to comment on Counselor Pivoy's question because clearly, an over amount, you know, years ago, they found that fluoride was causing severe problems. So it is, in higher concentrated amounts, there is much more risk than just dental fluorosis. I mean, it is a poison. It's, you know, like many other things, in higher amounts, it would be very risky. So this is where, they're saying at the concentration levels, those benefits would outweigh the risk. Is that correct? Is that...
At the levels used in water fluoridation.
Because at a higher concentration, clearly, there are many, many risks. I mean, I think that's fairly been fairly well documented according to what I've studied, that they found problems in areas where fluoride, you know, got into the air from the fertilizer plants and cattle were dying and things like that. So clearly, in high concentrations, there is a greater risk. Is that correct?
That's right. And the places to look are places like India, where many folks live in places where the natural water supply has very high natural levels of fluoride, so 10, 12 parts per million. And those folks have a lot of problems, not just with their teeth, but they'll have skeletal problems, too. And so that's why Health Canada says the maximum has to be 1.5 parts per million.
If you don't mind, I read quite a few of the studies, but it always seems to me that look at one part per million is always kind of around that figure. And I always thought, well, we're way below that. So definitely, we do not know if there are adverse effects at that level because no study refers to that low level. And that is also something that is difficult to compare ourselves to. We only can tell that the tooth decay is lower.
That was, that's essentially the only difference they could find when they do look across populations where they have 1.0, for example, parts per million. Because that's where it started in 1945, is when they did the early research and compared the natural fluoride level in different cities and then compared the decay rates. They found that it crossed over at about 1.0. This is where you had a minimum level of dental fluorosis, but also a reduced number of tooth decay.
So that is why the research were always using that one part per million? Okay, I get you. Thank you very much. No more questions? Thank you so much for your presentation. I appreciate the information you brought to the table.
If you have other questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them. I'll leave you with contact information.
Thank you so much. Well, Tony, you got your hands up from top.
Everybody's leaving. I thought they were all here for me. I guess fluoride is more important. Hello, Bill?
Thank you.
And Mayor and Council for allowing me some time for today.
I'd like one of these interest-free loans.
We'll talk about that.
Okay, Tony is there from Community Futures Alberta Southwest. And Tony Walker will now present what this organization is capable of doing for our community.
Right, and I'll be as quick as I can.
Thank you.
So as mentioned, I'm Tony Walker, the General Manager for Community Futures Alberta Southwest. We are a federally funded government program, have been around since 1992. If anybody's been around here that long, you might remember us as Southwest Alberta Business Development Institute, SWABD. Chuck Lee led the organization back then. In 2007, we changed our name to Community Futures Alberta Southwest. Okay, that's everything I just said. We have 27 offices here in Alberta. We have 90 offices in Western Canada, and we have 268 offices across Canada nationally. We get about $300,000 from the federal government each year, and that is our operating budget. From that, we have some staff and some travel costs, board costs. And we look after territory from north to Stately and Clairsoom, west to Lumbric, Pincher Creek, south to Cardston, Cardston County, and east to Fort McLeod and the MD of Willow Creek. The government gave us about $1.5 million over that 22-year period to do small business loans, and we've grown that $1.5 million to $3.5 million. Out of the $3.5 million, we currently have about $1 million in loans and $2.5 million ready to loan. I don't like to say it's just cash, it's ready to loan. We are a nonprofit organization guided by a volunteer board of directors, staffed with business professionals, actively engaged in developing and implementing community economic development strategies here in southwest Alberta. And we are a business development center that makes loans of normally up to $250,000 to individuals interested in starting, expanding, or purchasing an existing business. We're also considered an entrepreneurial development center that provides business training, counseling, coaching to individuals, again, interested in expanding or purchasing a business. And I'll just quickly go through who our board of directors are. Some of you might know some of these people. Lloyd Correll is our current chair. He represents the Carson County. Bill Hart is our vice chair, representing the town of Fort McLeod. Robert Bernard, our treasurer, representing town of Pincher Creek. Shirley Isaacson is our secretary from the town of Clairsoom. David Maholland, the director from the MD of Willow Creek. Beth Barbett, director from MD of Pincher Creek. And most important person, Dave Edmonds, the director from town of Carson. Most of these people have been with us at least more than a year. Some have been, like Dave Maholland, has been on the board for 18 years. So his experience with the Community Futures program is invaluable. Our staff is myself. I've been with the organization about five years, but involved in Community Futures about 11 years. Kirk Lentz started about same time as me in Pincher Creek, and that was his introduction to Community Futures. His background is, he was an EDO in Saskatchewan and has an economics and finance degree. My background, I have a Bachelor of Commerce in Accounting and Finance from the University of Saskatchewan. And our last staff is James Tessier. If any of you own a business, he would have been introduced to you when he was coming around the community last year doing the business visitation program. James also from Saskatchewan, and he is now actually a certified economic development officer. Some of our services include individualized one-on-one business counseling. That's probably where we spend most of our time, is actually talking to business owners, counseling them on anything from marketing to startup to expansion, helping them develop business plans is really what we do. And that is giving ongoing coaching and mentoring. We have an access to local business expertise through our referral network. And in the office in Pincher Creek, we actually have a small resource library that was funded at one time where we were buying probably $2,000 worth of books every year. That funding ended a little while ago, so some of our stuff... The Economic Development Officers and Committees that we work with, I also sit on three Economic Development Committees here in Carstens, Pincher Creek, and Fort McLeod. We also partner and work with the towns, the counties, and the MD councils. We have two RITAs in our area, the Provincial Economic Development People, Alberta Southwest out of Pincher Creek, and the South Grove out of Lethbridge. This one, I just threw a little graph in there in the history of our lending. As you can see, the offices in there, the people in Pincher Creek and the MD of Pincher Creek have probably benefited the most from our lending activities in the area, as between the two of them, it's just about half of the monies that we've loaned out. So and with that, yeah, over the years, we've left that money out a few times, over and over again, such that we've done $10.6 million in loans over the 22 years, and our loan loss rate is about $730,000. So very low compared to, you know, what you would expect from an alternative lender. Some of our current programs then, we are currently doing a program called the Foreign Direct Investment Strategy. Some of you might be involved in that. And there, we got some money from the federal government, the ICCI program, to train people in our area on foreign direct investment. So first, we're doing some training on that, you know, how to do foreign direct investment. And with that, it's not just foreign direct, it's business retention and expansion, basically, and then it's with a focus on foreign direct investment. The second part of that is to then develop a strategy for the region. From that, I think each community and area will come up with their own strategy, but the program was funded as a regional collaboration on foreign direct investment strategies. So that's currently ongoing. We also have our Youth Entrepreneur Camp every year. We send 60 kids to the Cypress Hills, just sells the medicine hat, and we teach them how to be business owners. These are 13- to 15-year-olds. And in addition to all the camp fun stuff, the horseback riding and swimming and all camp stuff, camp food, which is awesome, we also teach them how to start a business. And they get, they form into groups, small businesses. They make a pitch to a banker to try to borrow money. They purchase supplies, they build their products, and then on Saturday, when the parents come to pick them up, they sell all the products to the parents, pay back the banker, and then divvy up the profits. It's a really, really fun camp. I love going there every year. Just some of the kids, and then we see them a few years later, because we also have a youth program where when they're 18, they can come back to camp and be the youth leaders, the liaison between the kids and the adults. And from, just from seeing those kids, you really see the entrepreneurship budding in them. We also have what's called the Shinoka Entrepreneur Challenge. That actually is just wrapping up right now. That was a business, or is a business plan competition. And there was some online training out of Lethbridge. We partnered with Lethbridge on that one. And I think the business plans are all due the end of April here, and the winner will receive about $70,000 of cash and in-kind prizes to help them get their business plan off the ground. Very successful business plan competition, and we take part in that every year. I earlier mentioned our Business Visitation Program. So James came out and talked to a little more than half of the businesses in Carstens with a survey-type questions and compiled a report. That report is available on our website. For anybody that hasn't read it, we did come out late last summer, before all the elections and stuff, and presented on that report. Some of the findings were pretty interesting, and we're still using that report here in the Direct Investment Strategy, still going back to that and looking for potential opportunities and gaps. Another partner of ours is the Go Forth Institute Training Program. They have identified 100 essential skills that every business owner should have, and they've developed a program for that. It's available online for about $100, money very well-studied. One of the things I'm here to talk to you today is Business Improvement Loans. Last year, we piloted this program here in Carstens, and we did a loan. This is where the business owner can get a loan, and it's interest-free to them because the local municipality would pick up the bill on the interest. They're small loans. They're usually used to improve a business, most notably the exterior of buildings, you know, signage, windows, stuff like that, to, just to help downtown revitalization. It doesn't have to be downtown, it can be outside of downtown, and it's just to improve the business. We charge the interest then to the municipality, that is at prime plus three, currently 6%. All it requires is a letter of understanding, which you did sign last year, and you've set aside a little bit of money to help that program. And hopefully, you'll be interested in signing that letter of understanding again this year, and we can promote it again and see if we can have a little bit more success. Yeah, and we've always engaged the municipality in this area because the municipality can help us decide on what the loan is to be used for. And in there, we start talking about whether it's tax successful or not and how the town gets its value back for that interest. Whoops. Okay, the other thing that, I'll just direct you to the brochure. In there, I brought a snapshot of the presentation, but I also brought a couple of the brochures that we use. One is to promote the Business Improvement Loan Program, so that's a little brochure that we developed last year, copied it from Community Futures in Lethbridge, actually, and devised it for our local municipalities. The other brochure that's in there is a little brochure that describes what Community Futures is and what we do, so much of what I just said for the last little while. I also included our most recent newsletter. We put out about two a year. We tried to anyway, and in there, on the front page of that one, you'll see what types of businesses that we do or have lent money to. So that's a great little snapshot of what the portfolio mix is. And then also in that, on the left-hand side, is a sheet from Alberta Advanced Education. That is promoting the, what's called the Prairie Canada Futures Game, and we would partner with Alberta Enterprise and Advance Ed, sponsored by us and free to participants. I guess what I'm looking for today is just to see if there's some interest in attending this session and when we might want to hold it. What it does is it's a simulation tool for community leaders. A lot of communities like to do this before they sit down and do strategic planning because it does engage groups of people in discussing the future. It adds depth and strength to that regional planning, and it helps to hone leadership and decision-making skills. If anybody's ever attended it, what we do is Alberta Advanced Education comes out and you get into groups, you make some decisions based on, you know, where you should locate water treatment plants, or where you should locate a feedlot and things like that, and then they simulate what would happen over time, and then the results of your decisions come out, and then you make more decisions based on those. And if you're real bad decision-makers, it just gets worse and worse and worse. If you're real good decision-makers, it just gets better and better and better. And it's a, I mean, they call it a game, but it really is a tool that just makes you think that, you know, what some of the decisions that you make today, they have some early implications, but they also have some long-term implications and what those implications could be. So just a show of hands, out of the seven, who would be interested in extending such a thing?
When is it again?
When?
Yeah, is it scheduled?
No, not yet. Still trying to gauge the interest. And then from the interest, we're looking at, does it need to be a daytime, an evening, a weekend event? And then where? So if the interest is quite large, we might be able to hold two sessions. If there's only 20 people interested, then we might just do one session centrally, maybe Fort McLeod, something like that.
Tony, give us a little bit, have a better sense, how many hours are you looking at to do a simulation game?
It would be a half-day, probably four hours. If we did it over a lunch, we could provide lunch. If we did it in an afternoon or morning, then there might just be a little bit of driving involved.
I think Counselor Balfour is on our Economic Development Board, probably would be interested to participate in such.
Absolutely, yeah. No, and I think there's quite a few people from our board. So we would definitely invite them. Something you might be interested in?
I would be very interested.
So I will, finished all my presentations to councils in about two weeks, and it's at that time that I will take all my feedback and make some decisions on when and where we might have that. Okay. I'm also here to promote our new website.
Beautiful. That's like that one.
Back one more?
Really nice.
One more? There we go.
There it is.
So I'm just not showing you the actual website, I'm giving you the new website address. What we found was that all 27 of us in Alberta have different websites and different names and tough to keep it all up to date. So the Provincial Association brought us all into a program where we are now all under the banner of AlbertaCF.com, and we are, of course, www.SouthwestAlbertaCF.com. And on there, you'll see all the studies that we've done in the past, some things that we've helped with, the Roger Brooks Study was done just before I got here. That's all on our website, and then the BVPs from all of the communities, and there's a comparative BVP between the communities, so what they, all the communities have in common and what did they have different. The last thing then is that many financial institutions and business organizations actually refer entrepreneurs directly to us. Could be that mentoring and that coaching stuff that we can do especially for startup businesses, making sure people know what they're getting into. We can offer a little money to businesses that are turned down by traditional lenders. By that, I mean the banks and credit unions. We can work creatively with those institutions on joint financing. Sometimes we'll take the second position, give them the first, and as long as there's enough security for everybody, we're all happy. We can offer the counseling, the coaching, and the workshops, and the biggest thing that we support is that we believe in small business. I think that's everything that I had in my package at this point. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, just this one. So last year, we initiated the program, we got one loan out of it. This year, we're hoping to do, is there a cap? Like, is there a maximum?
No, it's more up to how much money you set aside, you know, as counsel in your budget. There is an example...
For paying the interest, you mean?
Sorry?
Is that three or is that five? Last year, we budgeted for three.
Yeah. And there's a little example in that brochure on whether someone, if somebody borrowed $5,000 over a couple of years or $10,000 over three years, which is the maximum. And I believe that the figures are, it's about $800 maximum if they did the full $10,000 over a full three years. And then actually, we did last year to just bill the interest annually. So last year, that loan only cost you a third of the $800, so 300 bucks, in trying to make it sound cheap.
So we commit to the three, it's a three-year term, correct?
Nope, just one year at a time, and that's...
But with the loan, when we give out, when the loan is given out, we commit to pay the interest over the term of the loan.
Right. But we will sign an agreement each year to make sure that the program is still relevant and that you budgeted some money, and so that we know to be out there promoting it. If you don't want to do it, then we just, the last year's agreement ends, and then we just don't do any new ones, kind of thing.
And it's already budgeted a little bit?
Yes, yes. What I'm wondering, how do you go about letting the business community know about this? And last year, you did visitations. Was that a time when you...
Yeah, a couple weeks ago, James came out to deliver our newsletter, and with that, he brought the Business Improvement Loan brochure and then just asked. I mean, we don't want to be pushy and, you know, only if somebody would be interested in the program would we give them the brochure. And then through the newsletter, ECDV newsletter, it was mentioned, and then we mention it every time we get a chance to here in town.
Okay, thank you very much. Counselor Bambi?
I hate to say this, but I think your name is wrong. It says Community Futures, and a community future is based on historical societies, museums, cultural events, and everything like that, but you're basically loaning money to businesses only. And so I'm saying with the realigning of the SCSS, how do these other societies react in your community to get money to keep operating? Is there any aligning in your Community Futures program for those?
No, the $300,000 budget is barely enough to have three staff with an office and things like that. I mean, I guess the whole Community Futures was a branding exercise that they undertook, and Western Canada, they're the only ones that are Community Futures. We used to be known more as Business Development Centers, but that gets confusing with the big federal government bank, BEC. So I know, I don't really like our name. I don't like the Alberta Southwest.
Well, I'm just saying, I wish you had an outlet for cultural events and museums and things like that.
We have a small budget for economic development, and that's where we've been able to help chambers and BECs, we're helping putting on a client service training session coming up here in Carstens shortly. So a small budget for that stuff, but not where we could entertain organizations asking us for any money.
Thank you so much, Tony.
Okay.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
We have one more delegation from the Chinooka Arch Regional Library System that will do a presentation. So that's Robyn?
Yes.
Okay. That is your, Robyn Heffernan.
Robyn Heffernan is mine.
Robyn Heffernan.
Yes. Can you hear everyone? I also have a little package of information.
That just happened. It's inspired.
Not in my eyes, everyone. If I may?
Oh.
Cardboard folder for your...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have a pen, yeah, me too.
Pen the doubles as a still is for your...
I absolutely like.
Thank you.
Wow. I'm surprised. I haven't seen that.
It's a pretty nightmare.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've never seen it on this end.
I'm nervous, pushing hard.
I'm working on my phone.
I see that I've left my speaking notes on my office desk, but that's okay. I think that I've done this presentation about 20 times now in the last couple of months, so we'll be...
Well, you're going to be perfect at it, we're sure.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council for your time this evening. I just have a brief presentation. As I've been sort of introduced, my name is Robyn. I'm Associate Director at Chinooka Arch Regional Library System, and I'm joined this evening by your Town Librarian, Donna Beazley, who has agreed to come along just in case. Sometimes council has questions that are best answered by the local librarian, because I'm from the regional system, and I don't always have insight into what happens on a day-to-day in the local library, but council sometimes will want to know. So anyway, so I just have a brief presentation. I want to cover, just really providing information. We do this every time after there's been an election, because of course, there are typically new members of council that may or may not understand the role that Chinooka Arch plays in your local library service, and that's basically why I'm here. Happy to answer any questions at any time. If you have, if you want to stop me, feel free to throw up your hand. I tend to sort of burn through this pretty quickly because I know your time is precious. So let's talk a little bit about how libraries are governed and structured in Alberta and also how they're funded. I'll talk a little bit about Chinooka Arch and what we do and how we plan our services, and also a little bit about our budgeting process. So it should be about 10 or 15 minutes or so. So I'll just talk, I'll just start, you have a handout of sort of the presentation. After doing this last time, we decided to sort of do the PowerPoint without the PowerPoint. So we still use PowerPoint to assemble our presentation, but we found that it just works well to have sort of more of a conversational style rather than having people focus on the PowerPoint. You have a wonderful place to display that, but not every town council has a good place to display the PowerPoint. So anyway, so you do have a copy of that. In the handout, you'll also note that there is a copy of our current plan of service, which I'll talk about, a little highlight document on our, looking at our last five years, and just another information document that talks a lot about the role that regional library systems play in your local library service. So that's the kind of stuff that's in your handout. So I'll start with, just with the local library just very briefly. And in Alberta, public libraries are very much a municipal responsibility, and it's very much a grassroots approach. So basically, if a community decides that they want to operate a library, that's their decision. There's no one in the province or any other level of government that's saying you need to have a library in your community. And I think that's one of the strengths of our system is that each, there's a group of people in a community that says, we want to have a library. They get together, they decide what it's going to look like, they decide what kind of service model it's going to have, and then the municipality typically will pass a bylaw creating the library board. You create, you appoint your library board, that's a responsibility of the council, and typically, there'll be a representative from your council on the library board, and I think that's Mr. Warren, who's also on the Chinooka Arch Board. You have a wonderful place to display that, but not every town council has a good place to display the PowerPoint. So anyway. So you do have a copy of that. In the handout, you'll also note that there is a copy of our current plan of service, which I'll talk about, a little highlight document on our, looking at our last five years, and just another information document that talks a lot about the role that regional library systems play in your local library service. So that's the kind of stuff that's in your handout. So I'll start with, just with the local library, just very briefly. And in Alberta, public libraries are very much a municipal responsibility, and it's very much a grassroots approach. So basically, if a community decides that they want to operate a library, that's their decision. There's no one in the province or any other level of government that's saying you need to have a library in your community. And I think that's one of the strengths of our system, is that each, there's a group of people in a community that says, "We want to have a library." They get together, they decide what it's going to look like, they decide what kind of service model it's going to have. And then the municipality typically will pass a bylaw creating the library board. You create, you appoint your library board, that's a responsibility of the council. And typically, there'd be a representative from your council on the library board. And I think that's Mr. Barnes, who's also the representative on the Chinook Arch Board. So, and then of course, the council provides funding to the local library to operate. The local library is a corporation under the Libraries Act, and so it's able to raise its own funds, but it's not a taxing agency. It can't go out and ask for money in a way that your council can. So the money comes from your council to the local library to operate. And there's other fund sources of funds as well, which I'll discuss in a bit. So outside of Calgary and Edmonton and a couple of the other larger municipalities, most of the public libraries in Alberta belong to the regional library system. So what the regional library system does is basically provide a framework by which municipalities can collaborate to share, I guess, the cost of delivering some of these high-level services. What it does is allow, it basically raises the level of service that's available in every community that participates. So that even the smallest villages, we have some tiny villages of a hundred and twenty people, like Milo has a top-notch library that is very vibrant and well-used by the community. So those are some of the things that the regional library system can do. Chinook Arch was, is actually the youngest regional library system in the province. We reformed in nineteen ninety-two. And at that time, there were a number of library boards that decided they wanted to explore bringing in regional library system. And so a steering committee was struck, and they went out, did a needs assessment, developed a sort of a plan. And then in nineteen ninety-two, twenty-two councils signed on to that. Since that time, we've grown to thirty-nine member municipalities. So basically, every municipality in our area, which is the US border, DC border, northern border of Vulcan County, and then over by Grassy Lake, I guess, is sort of our easternmost border. Every municipality that can join has, with the exception of Waterton and Nobleburg. So those are the two outliers. Last year, the Kinnai, or the Blood Tribe, joined. Even though technically, the federal land, as federal land, they can't join because they're not considered a municipality under the Libraries Act. You have to be a municipality to join a regional library system. Or you can also be a school authority. So they manage, they pipe the money through the bank council, through the school authority, and the school authority joined on behalf of the entire population. So they now have access to a full regional library service, and also, of course, their own public library facility. The first of its kind on federal lands in Alberta, in their brand-new multipurpose building, which is a really wonderful facility. Questions thus far?
You don't dare.
So we have, the Chinook Arch Library Board is a library board under the Libraries Act, just like your local library board, and we have the same responsibilities. So we create, the board creates governance policies, monitors financial progress, and assists in the needs assessment and long-term planning. And of course, we also have reporting obligations to the province, just like your local library. We have to let them know how we're doing. We keep certain stats that they request every year. And I'm sure a lot of it just goes onto a shelf somewhere up in Edmonton, but you know, they like to compile it and make it available for comparison purposes to other libraries. So was, back in the day when people signed on, they signed a membership, or I guess it was called a system agreement. And basically, the system agreement lays out the responsibilities of the region versus the responsibilities of the local library. It says, "The region does this, the local library does that." And that was just to sort of make it sure that people weren't stepping on each other's toes, and there was a clear understanding of what exactly the region was supposed to do. Now, since that document was signed almost over twenty years ago now, obviously, the world of information has changed, libraries have changed. So what we do on a regular basis is a plan of service. So we have this agreement that says what we do, and then we do a plan of service every three years or so that kind of, I guess, elaborates or builds upon that and says, "This is how we're going to achieve this particular goal that we have said that we would do, and that you are in fact paying us to do." Our current plan of service is 2012 to 2014, and you have a copy in there. We've just completed our needs assessment for our next plan of service, which will probably be a four-year plan of service. We like to keep things in sync with the local government election cycles. It just works well for both our planning and for our budgeting. So there'll be a new plan of service that will come out, and then approved by our board, hopefully, in the summer, it'll be August or September, whenever that meeting happens. So I've touched on this briefly, but the question is, why do councils belong? And the short answer is, it's a, regional library systems represent a cost-effective way to offer very high-quality library services to your residents. It allows you to, your local money invested in your local library to be maximized. So rather than having your local library staff working on non-value-added activities, such as cataloging, or maintaining the computers, or doing those types of things, those kind of things can be centralized and done in a much more efficient way on a region-wide basis. The main benefit, of course, that councils tend to appreciate is the benefits for the local residents. So that rich library service, rather than having access to just the holdings of one small library, and Carstensham has a very nice library, well-stocked library, and well-used library. Not all communities are as fortunate, and some are, of course, very small. Some are on the verge of not even being able to operate a library, but... So if you have a tiny little building that's sort of, or a little library that's tucked away in the back corner, that's an avid reader, or you know, there aren't that many resources there for children and families that are better in the community. So by belonging to the region, residents have access to the entire holdings. The libraries have agreed to share all of their holdings, so that it amounts to almost a million holdings. And we have a delivery system that will move those items from library to library, just based on the request. We have...
Can I just give an example of how easy that works for you?
By all means, I will.
Back about nine or ten years ago, I found a cousin had met up with somebody who was doing family history on my same family line. And they said that they had, this lady in Alliance, Alberta, had written a book on the Barnes family. Big thick thing. Boy, I'll tell you, I was just itching to get at that book. And so I went to the library here. I don't think you were there, Donna, but I asked our librarian, "If there's any way that they get that book from Alliance." She says, "Well, yeah, they've got a copy in their library, I'll just order it for you." So I called the lady who wrote the book, and she said, "Oh, I'll get down to the library, I'll donate a copy." So she went down to that library in Alliance, donated the copy. We made the order through the library here, told them they wanted it here, and they brought it here, and it was here in a week. And I had that book. It was just amazing how that works. Really, really good. No, it wasn't Becky at the time, was it Becky? No, it was Lee. But you saved on postage. Absolutely. Didn't cost me nothing.
Yep. Yeah, that'll be an example of interlibrary loan, which is another thing that Chinook Arch manages on behalf of its libraries. We do about seventy thousand of those types of requests a year.
Seventy thousand?
Seventy thousand, just for, those are books coming in from outside the region. Within our region, the number is actually seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand items we moved from library to library last year. So it's about three thousand items a day, so we have drivers that are in pretty good physical shape. They have big totes full of books that they're constantly lifting in. And one of them's in his seventies, he's doing really well. Yeah, so we host, we have, the online catalog, when you go to the library and search for books, that system's called Bibliocommons. We are sort of early adopters of that. It was a Canadian-developed product, it's kind of become the darling of the library world. I'm pleased to say we were one of the first ones in, but New York Public Library has it now, Chicago Public Library, Seattle Public Library, Toronto Public Library. So we're able to offer a top-notch experience. Historically, people going to a library, they expect sort of a second-rate card-catalog-type experience, but this is, it's a really wonderful, interactive, social-rich site that people are really appreciating. Also access to digital resources, so I'm not sure if any of you have tried the downloadable ebooks that you can get through the library through Overdrive? It's pretty great. We just launched a new service called Xineo, which is a similar thing for magazines. And I would say it's actually even a better customer experience, once you get signed up. I'm sure you have patrons coming into the library saying, "I want to sign up for this thing." But you can go in there with your library card and subscribe to. There's a hundred sort of A-list magazines, so Canadian Geographic, National Geographic, outdoorsman, Field and Street, I think is in there, fashion magazines, my mom found a quilting magazine in there, news magazines, all that kind of stuff. And it just, it appears on your iPad, and you just sort of, the full-color, full-magazine experience for no charge. So if your person likes to read magazines, and then you don't have stacks of dusty magazines accumulating all over your house. So those are just some of the, some of the things that, some of the benefits that your local citizens experience because of your membership in the regional library system. There are also benefits for your local librarian as well. And in smaller communities, it can be difficult to come by professional development opportunities. So we have libraries, librarians on our staff that will come out and do training in the library. We have a facility for training at our facility in Uppridge, where people can come in. We do training over video conferencing. And we also host annually a well-attended library conference. That gives all the librarians a chance to come in and talk and share ideas and that kind of thing. We bring in speakers from all over North America to speak at that conference. We centralize cataloging and ordering, so your library has money to spend as a result of your membership in the region. Two dollars per capita comes back to spend on library resources. And that's just to make sure that every library has some capital to spend on books. So we don't have the, I'm part of a region that'll be to buy books, not just borrow everyone else's sort of syndrome. Everyone has money to spend on books in proportion to their population. So we help to manage, and by helping to manage those funds centrally, we, having all of the purchasing coming through one desk, we get a really good discount from our vendors, we get the maximum discount. So that just makes a collection of dollars go that way for it. IT help desk service, something happens with the computer here, you don't have to call a local person and pay. We have IT professionals that will come out and fix it, or the computer can be sent back to our facility and repaired on-site, and we send out a swap, so that there's a minimum downtime. We provide the internet service for your library. The province pays for the library's connection to the supernet, which is the actual fiber that goes to the library. But we buy the internet that goes over that fiber and connects your library to the internet. I mentioned delivery, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand items last year. Yeah, so that's just an example of some of the stuff that we spend our day. Any question that the local librarian has, whether it's planning or needs assessment, we have librarians that can come on and assist with that as well. Reporting is another one. Whether you're a tiny library or a huge library, you have the same reporting responsibilities to the province, and so it can be a little bit tricky to get that together, but we help them with that. Provide them with the stats and everything. I'll just talk quickly about library funding. So since it is primarily a municipal service, if you look at overall dollars that go into libraries in the province, about seventy-five cents on the dollar comes from municipalities. So the province put about thirty-two million in. Couple of years ago, they said it was going to go up to thirty-nine, but it seems to be stalled at thirty-two. So if you're ever at AM, DNC, or whatever, and you feel like you want to lobby your local politicians, library funding is always something that seems to get overlooked. Such a tiny amount in terms of Alberta's budget, but it can make such a difference in so many lives. Most of the funding is on a per-capita basis, unless you're below three thousand in population. So Carstensham's above that, you're about thirty-six hundred, I think, around there, in population. The other thing the province does is, in order to sort of hedge a little bit, they're actually funding you right now on the 2010 population. And I'm not trying to throw them under the bus or anything like that. But they only have so big a pot to play with, so they keep funding you for 2010 population. Four years later now, your population has grown, so you're not necessarily getting funded for your full population. So that's another thing to also lobby your provincial politicians, or if you think of it, as those types of things. Carstensham Library receives about twenty thousand dollars a year from the province, just if you're curious. They also fund the supernet, which is, I mentioned this, the fiber backhaul, and that's worth about six thousand dollars a year. And they also purchase some digital resources that can be accessed by all the libraries in the province. In terms of Chinook Arch's budget, we do, we're moving to a four-year budget cycle from a three-year budget cycle. And as I say, our budget follows an extensive needs assessment process, where you talk to our councils, our boards, our libraries, and the public, and see what, how we should invest our resources. So we do the needs assessment, plan of service, and then the budget comes out of that plan of service. So we'll just be starting to work on the budget this year. It'll go to our board in August, and then it goes up to the councils for approval. And in order for the budget to pass, two-thirds of councils representing two-thirds of the population have to pass the budget. And so you would just let us know if you passed the budget, and then if you would like us to come out and speak to the budget, we can also do that as well. I think that's, that about sums it up. If there's anything that you'd like to add?
Something I would like to mention, just what I appreciate about Chinook Arch. I became the librarian here in December two thousand and seven. And what is great about Chinook Arch, it doesn't remain static. It is ever-changing and ever-improving, so that we can pass those same services on to our local patrons. Our transit, we used to only get transit two days a week, and now our libraries become so popular, we actually get to transit Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So that's a significant increase. When you talk, what was it, seven thousand items a year? But Carstensham has definitely increased in that area. And when Carstensham compares our statistics to other libraries within the Chinook region, we're not comparing Carstensham to McGrath or Raymond. Carstensham compares to Taylor and to Cole Dell in various, in different categories. So I think that's a significant thing for you to know. We have, I'm speaking to the technological services that Chinook Arch brings to us. I'll just give you a for instance. This coming Wednesday, we have Beth Norris, and I was actually asked in board meeting last night what Beth Norris's position is and what her background is. Do you have a chance to know?
Her position is Digital Services Coordinator.
Right.
Yeah. She's a librarian.
Yes, she's a librarian. She's coming to Carstensham without us having to pay anything further for her to come to Carstensham. Actually, after hours from six o'clock on until my media team is done with her, she's going to train them on how to update and keep our library website current, and create a plan with my staff. And I think that is a wonderful resource, and so is our board. Joe Paulson, who's a member of our library board, is actually going to attend that training as well. Just recently, we had the Southern Alberta Library Conference that Chinook Arch is a big supporter and organizer of. Probably one of the key ones, would you say?
Yes, yes.
The one that's just the city of Chinook in Carstensham. And school libraries, community libraries, all have access to that. And the speakers, they come to highlight the different issues regarding libraries, as well as selling libraries to their communities, and encouraging literacy, as well as maker spaces. Just such a broad spectrum of information. Chinook Arch plays a key role. They just don't sit back and stick to their mandate. Their mandate is ever-changing to support the communities that they represent, and I appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Donna. Very passionate.
I need to make a comment, too.
It's like, councilor. Councilor, bounce?
I'd just like to speak for the board, since I'm the town rep, how great a librarian that we have. She is top of the top. We really appreciate her passion, because she makes sure that things are happening in our library all the time. And I haven't heard a negative comment from people in years. And it's one, it's because Donna has kept our staff busy, she's kept them working, getting them well-trained, and we appreciate the support that the Chinook Arch has given. And I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the Chinook, as well as the library board. It's a good experience, and we, it's nice to work with top people. So thanks, Donna.
Well, and kudos, because I know you are a library advocate, and so we really do have the right person. I see four of you sitting here, and I'm thinking, boy, our library is in a great position to have four of you. You've sat on our committee before. But something that you just reminded me of, Dennis, in May, the Gemma Mary Kerr Library is doing a complete month of customer service. Because Chinook Arch has enabled us to offer so many different diversified areas, there's like thirty different things you can access with your library card. And so starting in May, we are going to do Monday through Thursday, trainings, all day with our patrons, how to access things, the things that they can get with their library card. And it's the most of their library card, is really our theme. And just for instance, you don't, for some things, you don't even need a library card for. Just this afternoon, I had a gentleman come, who is a reverse snowbird, I think, because he's come back to stay here from Phoenix, and he's American. But he was totally exasperated that we don't get the Calgary Herald. That would cost us just under five hundred dollars a year to keep the Calgary Herald on a daily basis. So I showed him, without even having a library card, CarstenshamLibraryCA.ca, to press display, to choose the country of Canada, Uganda, from A to Z. Whatever country you choose, he gives you a list of their newspapers, and he can access them. "Oh, I've tried that in other ways," he said, "and it cuts me off after a few pages." I said, "Let's do this together." Five minutes later, he was cruising the Seattle Post, the Calgary Herald, and the Phoenix... The Phoenix Sun? And he was just thrilled, because he came in saying, "You know, I was in here six or seven years ago, and it was the grumpiest library in visit I've ever had." And I said, "I can't, never talk to the bellman." I was glad to see, he is respectable, what he could get without even having a library card change. So he knocked a lot, a lot happier than the one he came in tonight.
Thank you. Robin?
I just have, just to sort of build on that, in terms of actual numbers. So we keep track of how many, if you're a net lender or a net borrower from the region. And Carstensham is very emphatically a net lender. And that tends to mean that you have a good librarian that's building a collection that's desirable, so that not only do other people in the region want it, but also the local readers are satisfied in the reading. And not just reading, of course, it's DVDs and everything like that. So, so yeah, last year, lent about twelve thousand items and borrowed, oh, sorry, yeah, lent twenty-one thousand items and borrowed, so quite an asymmetrical sort of stat there. But yeah, it just, it tends to be, the dynamic libraries tend to be net lenders, and that's just the way it is. Collections constantly refreshed, and people are in there borrowing.
Maybe one day you can give us a tool.
We would love to see that.
It might be something good for us to do. Yeah.
We'd love to have all of you.
All right. Thank you so much for your presentation.
If you have any questions, my car is there, feel free to give me a call or send an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we presented. Well, we presented. Thank you. All right. We will carry on. At this point, we have in camera at 7 o'clock, so we have about a half an hour to finish our regular business. So we need to look at the minutes, at approving the minutes of March 25, 2014. It was a regular council meeting. Anybody wants to put a motion forward? Okay, Councilor Creed has put a motion forward to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 25. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We also need to approve the public hearing that we held on March 25, 2014. Okay, Councilor Banbury, put that motion forward. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. So let's go to the request for decisions. We had brought forward three recommendations at the Committee of the Hall. The first one was with the Moment Trail Committee Terms of Reference. Oh, excuse me.
Just point of order here, you did have a shared service meeting as business arises.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay, let's go back to 6A. You're right. Okay, let's go back to 6A. Shared Service Review Meeting. We would like to have a shared service review meeting on April the 15th from 4 to 8. How does that look for all of you?
From 4 o'clock to 8?
Yes.
We have Audit Committee meeting at 3 o'clock, I believe.
At 4.
At 4 o'clock.
So 4 o'clock. Okay, so we have a conflict right there. So we could do 5.
We could do 5, probably.
Would you have enough time for your Audit Committee?
Yeah, it only takes an hour.
About a half an hour?
Half, half hour to an hour.
Maybe 5. Let's go 5:30, just to give extra time.
So we start at 5:30? Okay, so you will have to push it a little bit later, right?
I need a motion. Well, if I might, Madam Mayor, the intent of this is just to have some focused discussion about the presentation we had on Thursday night, and to determine what areas council would like to see us move forward with. So I anticipate three hours will be sufficient, but it needs to be kind of a focused discussion.
Yeah, we need to have a motion.
Now, before I make that motion, is this for the shared services that come due at the end of May? Or are we going to discuss the whole shared services review?
Well, there were 12 initiatives, six and six.
Six of them come in May?
Six are more urgent than six others.
So is that the six that we're going to discuss? Are we going to discuss all 12?
If I might, the intent would be to discuss all 12 recommendations and determine if it's something that you want to move forward with or not. So you wouldn't, you don't necessarily want to get into the details of what the agreement will look like at this point. We just want to know, is it something you're interested?
It's to find out the one that would interest this council for further study.
And the timelines presented were just recommendations anyway.
Yeah, exactly right.
So I'll make that motion that we have a shared services review meeting, April 15 at 5:30.
In December? Marion? December.
To review all 12 items.
April 15th, or something?
Yes, 5:30.
5:30.
It's a long one. We have supper.
Meat pies.
Okay, you will have meat pies. I have some left in the pantry.
By the way, we are providing supper tonight, but not till our last delegation is done, because you'll have some time to eat while you discuss.
That's not a problem.
So you've already gone on your calendar Audit Committee for that day, or are you doing it?
So 5:30.
All in favor? Thank you. It's a motion passed. All right. Let's go to item seven, Request for Decisions. As I said earlier, those recommendations come from the meeting of the Committee of the Hall. The Moment Trail Committee Terms of Reference, we need a motion to approve those.
I'll make that motion to approve those terms of reference.
As given?
As given, as presented.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you. The swim club fees, if you remember, we discussed the set lengths, and we chose to reduce the fees in view of the support of volunteer, many volunteers also giving us. Councilor Barfes is putting motion forward to approve the swim club fees. All in favor? Thank you. The third motion has to do with a lease agreement with West Wind School Division regarding the Lions Park, and it was to find a way to improve the services on this park.
I guess, because I'm on the Parks and Recreation Board, I should bring that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Barnes. Any further discussion?
I'm still not clear in my head exactly how this is going to work. The school division is going to take over the Lions Park, and the town is going to be allowed to use it at their terms of agreement?
Well, if you want to put it this way, I think what you say is correct. In other words, we'll have unrestricted use of the park, but they will look after much of the care of the park.
The alternative is what we've had currently, where we look after everything and they use it all the time.
In other words, their costs will be theirs by those and ours.
It's a good thing, Richard.
And a cost of it?
It's a really good thing.
Once we lose control of it, we have unrestricted control.
And I'd just like to mention that according to the Committee of the Hall, the approval was to agree with, in principle, and so that the terms are really not worked out yet.
We haven't agreed to the agreement.
And what I understand from the discussion we had at that time is that the lease basically just enables them to contribute funds to the maintenance of that field, which they would have liked to have done, but they couldn't unless they have a lease agreement to do that.
How soon are we going to have an agreement?
Well, that will have to be with administration to decide as soon as I can get the people from the West Wind School Division together. But there is an interest here to get that moving forward.
I'll go along with it in principle at this point.
But that is a whole, that is the way the motion was given. So, Councilor Barnes, who is on the panel?
Me.
Oh, why don't you go? I thought it was you.
I made the motion.
You made the motion. Okay, any further discussion?
Just for the record, it would be wise to actually reiterate those motions at this table, so that we make sure we get those accurately reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead. I recommend to council that the town pursue a lease agreement with the school division for the football field and the baseball diamond and the Lions Park in principle.
Yeah, we'll take out the recommended council, but sorry.
Yeah, I make the motion to council that way, preserve the agreement with the school division.
Is that all right? All in favor? Thank you. So we have done all this. So...
The next one coming up, I have to leave, because my wife is involved in the application, so I really shouldn't be sitting here just looking at this. I'll just vote.
Okay.
This should be my break time.
There's no, she doesn't make any money from it.
No, she doesn't. But nevertheless...
But the organization that she's associated with is the conversation that we had. There's a financial benefit to the organization that she's...
I appreciate your disclosure, Councilor Barnes. You may want to record that, Brian?
So I'll come back in about...
We'll bring you back in one minute.
Okay, thank you. So here you have in your packet some information given regarding the state of affairs with the museum. And maybe, Councilor Edmonds, I will give you the chance to...
Are we talking about the donation right now, before we talk about the waiver of the fees?
Oh, the donation. All right, let's talk about the donation.
Waiver of fees, right.
Okay, the waiver fee. I really think that there is no reason why we can waive the fees for the rental of the gym at this point to display historical items, which are some that are in the museum right now, and some that they will request from people to bring from their homes. And it could be actually something interesting if advertised properly, to bring people together and to see some of those historical artifacts, which are part of our culture and fabric of this town. So I need a motion to...
I'll make the motion that we waive the rental fee for the June 2nd display of quilts.
Second and third.
Second, yeah, second and third. So they can go ahead and do this.
Any questions regarding this item? If you saw it fits the policy that we have, the donation policy, it does fit it, it came to the table because it's beyond and above the $200, which is a limit that Marion has to approve donations. Okay? So all in favor? Thank you. This is passed.
You might want to just wait for a minute to show how council will...
You need to stretch your leg, Russell.
Got some circulation back in this leg.
I needed a pair of glasses. I skipped a line twice. That's a sign of trouble.
I'm getting on that.
Mayor.
I find that I have to work.
You got him there for her.
Dave, there's been a course on the $7,000 program. We can't stand back and have your money back missing.
Too late.
Well, there's got to be a way we can utilize it at some point. I don't know.
Yeah, if they have the ambition to utilize it, they could. But it's been sitting here for four years.
Probably about three.
About three?
One of the reasons.
And he was a... That was a good lesson. It was a good lesson. It was an investment in education. The Historical Society's $7,000 investment on the program to help the right brands that they didn't use.
It sounds very much like a...
Well, ultimately, there's... They're betting you are...
Yeah, they do. So this is what...
It's maybe former leaders.
Yeah. Princess Redford.
Yes.
Especially as an item, it's a study. Because when you have one item on your side, the other side, it passes your depth of perception.
All right, we're back in session. Councilor Barnes is back.
You have to sit down because of me. Take Jeff's part. Be the half-brother.
All right, we have one more item of business to deal with at this point. Carston Historical Society, there we go. Councilor Edmonds, help us a little bit here.
Well, I got up the information here, and back in 2003, the society had a study done on the building, and at that time, for the repairs to the external portion of the building, it was around probably $75,000. Since that time, no work has been done on the outside of the building, and we now have sections where the capstones on the entrances are split, and they're only going to get worse, so it's starting to be a safety hazard. We have some of the sandstone blocks that are no longer attached to the building. They're just sitting there, and so these are also a liability. Now, the problem is that the last fundraiser we got was $565,000 to do major repairs. I've got another company coming on Thursday that's going to give me a quotation as well. Now, the first quotation is a very major repair to the building. I'm also meeting with Grace Shaw next Monday to see what they would do. We can apply for grants, or they can apply for grants, in the amount of up to $100,000 per year. The grant dates are February and September, so we've missed the February one. And if we apply in September, you're limited on how much you can get, because it's just whatever being left in the pot. So we probably can get somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000. Now, these are 50 cent dollars, and the big problem that you have is you cannot use any other lottery-funded organizations for matching funds. So you have to find some of your own income. The problem I have is nobody in the society is willing to write applications for grants. The other problem they have, we lose accreditation at the end of this year, 2014, which will remove the only $1,500 income that they have. The only other money they have coming in is approximately $700 to $800 a year in donations. Their monthly expenses, or not monthly, but yearly expenses are between $10,000 and $12,000. The other problem is that they do not have an operating budget. They just spend money as things come out. The board approves it, and they spend the money. We could have saved money this last year. We had insulated covers made to put on all the windows. They never got around to putting them on. This is one of our harder windows, and our utilities for gas and electricity run around $3,500 a year. And I don't know what it'll be this year. It's going to be higher because of the cold window, while without those covers on the windows, heat was just radiating out through there. So the problem I see is that they need somebody that is going to write grants. Jeff and I met with Dave Johnson last night, and we covered some different things, the possibilities we can do in the future. We are going to have a new intern starting in May, and Jeff is thinking that maybe we can take a portion when she starts, or he starts, to get them started, show them how to write grants, or even have him write the grants for them. But, you know, it's an ongoing thing. You can't just do it once, because you don't always get the money you want. The other thing we discussed was possibly applying for a position at the casino, which would give them approximately anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000. You can do that once every three years. It would give them enough operating funds for three years, and then they can reapply again. Some people aren't in favor of that, because it's something we don't believe in. But the thing is, all the money we're getting comes from lottery funds regardless, so it's not a big deal as far as I can see. I don't believe in gambling, but if it's available and the casinos are set up in such a way that the government requires them to give away some of their money, so we may as well take advantage of that. So what I'm looking for is, do any of you have any suggestions as how we can get this society... society working better and becoming productive?
Yeah, I have one, but it's not a good one. I need you to pick up the director.
Well, I have offered to help them get re-credited.
Well, good.
There's nobody in the organization knows what's involved.
Because I think you should be...
Mayor Cronin.
I think Marion wanted to speak, would you mind?
No.
I was just gonna put, in addition to that, the discussion we had, Jeff and I had, was that perhaps the intern could assist with writing a bit of a business plan...
Right.
...and a capital plan for them, so that the board is moving in the right direction. I agree. So, just in addition to that.
Right.
I guess the bottom line is you need to recruit some new bodies in there on the board that are very, are a little excited about doing some of the work, because, you know, to have people that are just in their name only and, you know...
Well, they have probably two to three people on the board to do all the work. Like, Maxine Rogers spends probably two, three days a week...
Yeah, she really does.
...down there cleaning, doing whatever she can, but she doesn't have enough knowledge to be able to re-equip the tin, send equipment out, that type of thing.
Counselor Edmonds, you made a statement in that middle paragraph, outlined in the middle paragraph, the last statement. I want you to know that I will not read that statement.
Thank you.
But I am highly aware that that's what you are a counselor for and a representative for. You are not going beyond your scope, as far as I'm concerned. And your interest in the Historical Society, like Mayor Cronin said, we'd like to have you as a director.
Yeah, I agree too.
And I know from being a member of that, the liaison between the council and the Historical Society, the amount of work that you did. Those insulated covers over the windows will also prevent the light rays from...
Damaging the...
...damaging the museum, the artifacts.
Well, we do have ultraviolet film on all the windows.
Yes, but those will also assist. So, I can't understand, you know, I don't know, I don't know how you're gonna solve this problem, because volunteers are very hard to find.
I really think that, moving forward, we need to have exactly what Marion said. You need a business plan. You need to have a little bit of a sense of how you're gonna finance your operation. And you need someone at the head that has passion and an interest in that society. And honestly, if you could become accredited again, I would really think that it would help this organization greatly.
I think it's time you're gonna find, my wife's a very capable person in there to help too. She can wield a hammer, she can do all kinds of things, and she's, she's just getting her feet wet in there.
Right.
She talks about it all the time, and I know that she will be a valuable asset.
I mean, you say wielding a hammer, you know, we want him to be there for us.
Well, and you gotta tack up those panels, whatever you have to do, but...
Marion, we're getting another, a new intern.
That is...
What is happening with our former intern?
She's actually been moved into the position that Ryan vacated, or a semi-position. So, she's our, Chris Fox resigned as our FCSs director.
Right.
And so, Alexis is 50% FCSs director and 50% finance admin.
So, she could be utilized with the Historical Society right now?
No, she's got a, she's got a...
She's got a full play.
And that intern is a one that we have a grant for.
Correct.
Join with the council.
Correct.
Okay.
See, the other concern I have too is that we have very little, I showed you how much funds they have in the bank right now. The other problem is that, once these funds are gone, I have a fear that the society's gonna say to the town, we can't do it anymore. There's the building. Take it over.
I have another question that comes from, from your comments here, where operating expenses have been funded from funds donated for repairs.
Yeah.
I'm concerned that there may be some issues that way.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, it's, it is a problem, but that's the only money they have, and they just skip.
But has that money been allocated, like, when you get money donated from government things, like we were talking about there a week ago, if that might be allocated for this thing and they're starting to use it for something else?
No, these were private donations.
They're private donations, okay. That's a different story.
Private donations can be used.
Counselor Pymore?
But, see, most of the private donations that were made were donated for repairs.
Right.
And that's what I keep trying to tell them, is you can't keep...
It's not operating capital, it's not operating...
Counselor Edmonds, if I may, just to inquire here, is it a matter of they're soliciting volunteers and just not getting them, or is it a matter of there's, pretty much all the positions are filled with people that don't really step up and aren't willing to step back?
Maybe some of them are too old to stand on a ladder to do this.
But it's not the physical work we want, it's mental.
Yeah, it's the mental work. Are they looking for help in that area, or are they thinking, hey, we're good?
Well, what's happened over the years is they burned out their volunteers.
Right.
And so, most of them are just doing minimal.
So, is the short-term solution here, it sounds to me like they need some grants. Is that...
Big time.
Big time. So, missing the February deadline is pretty big.
Yeah. And like I say, if they don't get accredited, they lose the only $1,500 that they've got coming in, so they don't qualify for FCSs anymore.
Okay, so, we have a plan in place through administration to offer support through the intern program. So, are we okay with this?
Absolutely.
We're okay with this? All right, so that is one good thing.
Do we need a motion on that?
Uh, no.
No.
The next one is, Counselor Edmonds, how fast, how soon can you start to kinda become the directing voice for the group?
Better ask him if you want. We're past that point.
At this point, we're on a rescue mode, so...
But, see, the problem is, they have the president.
Yeah.
Unless the president resigns.
I don't think that would be too much of a burden to them, because obviously I'm sure...
You might wanna just approach him and say, I'd love to be a director and help out.
When are the next elections?
Any year. Next February.
All right, so can we be part of a shadow director to...
Well, all I can do is try to steer them in the right direction, but they're not always receptive. Like I told them two months ago, you need to set up the budget and stick to it.
Do they have bylaws?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna add.
They do? They have bylaws, but they're not following, basically.
That's what Marion suggested, they have a business plan.
Right, yeah.
Marion, do you want to add something? The big Kelsa Creed had a question.
I'm just wondering, you know, like many of the organizations have, you know, rules, references, terms of references that are even beyond that organization, they have to follow. And I'm wondering if the Historical Society has any mandates of things that they're required to do, like, do a budget?
No, there's nothing in the...
There's nothing in the...
Maybe it would be worthwhile, or something of that sort.
And does the town have any jurisdiction to impose any rules, or that we don't have any?
Yeah. See, like, until 2009, when we got accredited, they didn't even have a handbook written on how to do anything. It was all strictly verbal, and as people quit the society, then that information was lost.
All right, so, are there any more recommendations beside the internship?
Well, if I may, that internship would only help, starting in, what, November?
No.
Oh, in May?
It starts right away.
The intern will be here in May, and we anticipate that about 10 days should be sufficient time to get them on track.
And test their grit.
The intent that the intern is going to be there to provide administrative support long-term, but to get, help them get on track with some grants and...
To get the framework.
Get the framework and place grants.
Maybe some system, terms of reference, kinda clean it up a little bit?
See, their solution from our meeting last night was, let's hire an administrator. Which, which sounds great, it would be a great way of getting it rolling, but we don't have $50,000, $60,000 a year to hire.
They'll be gone in about three years. Okay, I guess one other suggestion that we could do, just for my own, well, I think it'd be for all of our clarification, could we request a delegation from the, from the Historical Society, the president and treasurer, so that we could, you know, maybe...
Hear from them.
Quiz them on maybe their plans, just so that we can, you know, understand as a whole council what their feelings are.
Can I, can I just something, maybe? We have, you have that quilt display coming up. Is it possible at this event to try to raise awareness for the need of volunteers for the society?
Well, every time we tried, we put ads in the paper, not Channel 32.
People to people, it's a different kind of rapport.
Well, we know it's right.
Nothing to lose at this point.
Counselor Creed, I think that's what we've designated Counselor Edmonds for, is to bring that discussion back to this council without having a delegation here. And I think that he could present it carefully, or more careful than, than the delegation.
Well, I...
And there's a statement in here that he made that I feel...
Well, I have, I have ultimate confidence in Counselor Edmonds, I just thought it'd be nice to kinda get it, kinda hear it from their own lips and kinda just so that they...
I'd be concerned about that.
The only problem is, the society is not a committee of the town.
Right.
It deals as an individual entity.
Okay.
So, therefore, we have absolutely no jurisdiction over that.
Although we have, we have an interest.
We have an interest, but no jurisdiction.
A big interest.
All right, we have a delegation right now, the Black Sand Management Group, it is...
Would we be able to just finish the agenda items here before going down?
Oh, the correspondence?
Okay. Would you mind if you give us five minutes to finish our business? Thank you.
Mayor Cronin, item nine is committee and other reports. Can I make a suggestion? I hate writing reports, committee meeting reports. Why do we not instead have each secretary from the committees that we serve on, send the minutes of that meeting to our CAO? That way, that way you verify whether your counselors are there, and what your counselors are asking the questions for, and, and how they're responding to the questions.
Counselor Van Groot, the only difficulty is as fellows. Some minutes are very well taken, some minutes are very sketchy, and don't tell us a lot.
To me, that's, that's a cop-up, because, because minutes have to be...
Well, it's not a cop-up.
Minutes have to be minutes. They have to be...
A cop-up is not writing a report.
Who's there, and who's there?
And I would add that those minutes aren't, aren't approved minutes until afterwards either. They've gotta be approved by that board, so you don't...
Well, so, we're a month behind.
Okay, Counselor, you still have an option to present your report orally at the table, if that's what you choose.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's just another...
If that's what you choose.
You know, if, if those minutes are not approved, then why are we writing a report on those minutes, what happened in that meeting?
We're giving our report, not a minutes report, we're two other things.
Well, it's basically the same report.
Okay.
They might be, but...
All right, if you choose not to write it, come and present it.
I'm not, I'm not saying that I, I choose not to write one, I'm just saying that I think we could expedite this manner by doing that.
You know, you may want to expediate, I find it very interesting to read through the report, and then I can ask you questions that probably through the minute I couldn't, I couldn't get those little bits of information.
I've started something different when I go to my meetings. I just take my pad and I just start typing and writing my report there. And I'll tell you, it's a lot easier to do a report, Mary can attest to, I sent two reports to her last night, right after my meetings, I had them done. And prior to doing that, you know, I'm thinking, oh, man, I gotta get that thing done, I'm screwing over getting it done, then I forget half the stuff, you know, that went on in the meeting. So, I find that if I just take my tablet there and do my report as the meeting's going, and I'm, it's current, it's right on. And then set it off, it's really simple, to me.
Okay.
We have a delegation, we don't have to get any wasted.
Do you want us to carry on? Okay, let's move on. You have the town council motion list. Do you have any question regarding those motion list? No? All right, so...
I just wanna play out, is this the one that used to be sideways and now it's right?
Yeah. I figured that out.
I gave some direction. Counselor Pymore, thank you for your gratefulness. Okay.
It wasn't unnoticed.
Under 10, any questions? I guess we just got Counselor Van Groot questions on report, any other one? No? Okay, let's go to correspondents. AUMA Correspondents, any question regarding this one? No? Okay.
Are we, are we sending anyone?
That is a request for someone to go and participate.
Are we sending a delegate?
We haven't in the past.
We haven't?
No, we haven't. Alberta Municipal Affairs?
They got a new minister.
Yeah, we have another new minister, so...
We have a new minister, and any other comments regarding this one?
No.
No?
Marion's got one.
Mayor Cronin, this is for the awards.
The Minister's Awards.
And so, we were just looking for, do you have any suggestions of things we could make?
Yeah, I had, I had one idea regarding this one, and to me, the one I found interesting was a partnership award. And I really felt that with the regional partnerships that you had, we have two of them now that we did, but especially the one on the waste management. I think that one is interesting. The other one that we did is the shared service review. So, one of those two, I think, is something that would be worthwhile, especially if we are going to put the shared service in action, I think that would be something that will be, was being recognized, the effect of such grant.
One of the other recommendations that came from staff was on the positive ticketing program that we have implemented between the RCP and...
Sure, something like that. That would be, or what you would call it, Safe Communities Award?
With the deadline at May 23rd, I don't know how much time we can put into this, but we're spending a lot of time creating this new Main Street Safety Initiative. I'm wondering if, if that's finalized before then, we submit it, maybe it gets the Safe Communities Award.
We could also have that. So, I think there are many possibilities under those Exeter Awards.
Yeah, COP, et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah, our COP should be, that's a great thing.
The other one is closer to home, is, there is a DVD available, but I think what Grant did is photocopied all the pages from the DVD, is that what he did?
No, I can shoot to that. These are just documents that they sent with the letter, but we do have a DVD, and I've given it to Bart to review, I've reviewed it, and there is some clips from there, they're about 20 minutes to half hour, that I think would be beneficial for council to have, maybe at one of the committee, at the whole meetings. And we could invite Bart in, we could show one of the clips, and then he's available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
So, we'll try to arrange that if that works.
Thank you.
That would be my preference.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see that DVD, I really would.
Bart presented.
And Bart presented, yeah.
Yeah.
We're gonna get to see Bart.
The, we have Alberta Transportation, there are two pieces of information, one for municipal grant payment, in the amount of $11,952.37 precisely.
That we applied for in 2012.
Yeah, it's just a little behind time. That was all the...
Tribidity.
Tribidity monitor. And the other has to do...
Federal gas tax. Federal gas tax.
With the gas tax, yes. So, another program. And it shows you that we received twenty-five thousand dollars under that program. And that was used for the sludge park replacement and a tank liner replacement.
So what was the turnaround on that grant? Was that a year, six months?
Yeah, probably, probably a year.
Wow.
I, I don't know exactly the application date, but usually we have a pretty good sense from the department whether they will be approved, and we know based on the guidelines of the grant, so we'll move forward with the project. But it's taking six to eight months to process a grant application.
Wow.
And I don't anticipate it's going to get any better now that they've moved the gas tax to municipal affairs.
Yes.
That used to be under transportation, and they were much quicker response, so.
All right, the next one has to do with the Chamber of Commerce, it's a thank you letter, and I love your work, by the way.
Oh, wow, we just changed it, so we're getting a new. Sorry. That's a-
Not too bad.
Well, yeah, we were using the new skills of Jerome down at the-
Okay, perfect.
At the hut, so.
Okay, and the next item has to do with June Beach Center. They're looking for some money. Unfortunately, it doesn't quite fit our donation policy, but what I recommend to do with this one is to all let the committee know if they want to- And see if they would contribute to America. They do not tell us who that soldier is. I felt, do you have it?
His name is Peter Jacob Martinez Martin, and he's actually one of the veterans that we've just received with an applause. We just received twenty-one plas, and they'll be, hopefully by the end of this week.
They're going to get high.
They're going to go around, they need to be red, so we don't want it to go up so high that you can't read the description from.
So you still got family in town?
I don't have it.
What we have, we, we put to ask the family to see if they can help, and I don't know who his family is.
Okay.
I know he was married to an old son. There is something we can also do individually, is to contribute ourselves to that organization. Okay?
I think it would be wise, though, to try to collaborate donations into this gentleman's-
Yes, maybe we can do it with a legion, maybe if you want to donate to a legion to the, as individuals, we can do that.
As far as words with a conversation paper.
Yeah, Marian, do you have that, as we are trying to put that in a paper as a request? Yeah. Okay, the next one is an institute for the advancement of Aboriginal women. It's again a request for donations, but, and, and invitation to March, well, it's passed. It's March 20th, 2014.
May 22nd.
Here, I have March, online, March 22nd.
May 22nd here.
Okay, so then type over there. Okay. Yeah, it's just a typo. All right, May 22nd, 2014. It has not been passed council tradition to go to that, so it doesn't fit our mission. Okay, so we're pretty well done. Any other questions, Marian? Things that we can do, tire, we just got. All right, thank you, Reni. And, yes, would you please do the-
I'll be there.
Okay. Motion to go in camera, all in favor? Thank you.